Hope and pray that you would just direct us in this meeting. We ask for wisdom as we make decisions for the county. And those that protect us and keep us safe watch over them and direct them. Add to this prayer, we pray in Christ's name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone. March twentieth meeting of the commissioners. First thing, minutes were sent to be emailed. Any corrections?
Motion to approve.
Second, in second, all favor. Aye. Okay, payroll number six for calendar year two thousand seventeen totals two hundred fifteen thousand five hundred eighty dollars and seven cents. We had a total of two hundred fifteen claims totaling two hundred twenty thousand six hundred twenty-seven dollars and fourteen cents.
Motion to approve payroll and plates.
Second.
Second, all favor.
Aye.
Three, zero. Monte.
First. Good morning.
Good morning.
We have eighty inmates, nine are DOC and twenty-one are F six DOC. That's all I have this morning. Nice and short of the week.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Have a good day. Josh is next. Good morning.
Good morning.
Do you want a copy? All right. Uh, number one, I've got the dust stay bids for this year all coming in this week. Um, another, one thing we changed this year, we're gonna put that on our website so that people can download that document and then mail the money in rather than come from seven to three thirty when we're in the office. Um, and then something we're gonna do a little different there is me and the crew are gonna go out and measure in stake rather than the homeowners having to measure in stake so that we know our measurements are accurate. And also then we know where to tell our trucks to go to deliver that. Um, another thing we're gonna probably do different this year is last year, we bought the material from one company and then had to coordinate with that company and then someone else to put the product down. And we've got a company that will do both. Get the product and distribute the product all in one shot so there's no coordination, there's no truck setting on the side of the road paying downtime to wait for the other guy to meet up and such. So we're probably gonna do that a little different this year. Um, backhoe crews are, we've got plenty to do from the winter that, uh, the public's called in and we've noticed. So they're starting today to get out and start fixing some stuff. Um, Nate and I are working on some final right of way projects with the three conversion, road conversion projects that we have on five hundred west, five hundred south, and nine hundred west. Um, we're pretty close, I think each of those have, uh, nine hundred west C is, we're pretty clear. We have one that just needs to come, make time to come to the office to sign the right of way, but that's pretty much a go. Five hundred west and five hundred south, we have two or three more right of way forms to get filled out, but we're close on that. We've, I've made contact with all of those owners and discussed thoughts and concerns, so we're getting close on that. Um, as far as the spring stone, we're through half the townships in the county. The other half will be done this week or first of next. So our stone will be spread and most of the gravel roads will be graded and everything will be good to go there. Um, and then one big thing right now is we're evaluating all the current equipment that we have down there and what is expired, what needs updated, things of sort, what we can live with, live without, things, you know, there's some different avenues that I personally would like to take with, um, you know, the help of the staff down there on some things that we may need that we never had in the past. Uh, when we get to that, we'll bring it up in the next meeting of what those things are so everyone's up to speed. Um, and then I have the two thousand sixteen, it's not on here, um, it was just a late entry. But, uh, number six is I have the budget for two thousand sixteen, the final budget and everything that's all completed that I'll turn in to you folks for signatures. And then once I get all those signatures, I'll make copies for Beth and get those mailed into the state.
Just wanna bring them up, we'll just take care of it now.
Yep.
Motion to have the commissioners approve, this is the bid, uh, actual physical year of last year, two thousand sixteen.
Two thousand sixteen annual report.
Yep, yep, it's the annual report.
So motion to approve and sign by?
I think it's all of us.
It's everybody.
The commissioners.
All three lines, yes.
Twenty sixteen budget review.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Final note, just real quick, um, se- second weekend, everything's going great, happy to be on the team. Everyone from Beth's staff, the courthouse, you folks, commissioners, and most importantly, down at the, uh, all the employees of the county. Um, just welcome me with open arms, so just for feedback to you folks that I appreciate that and everything's going good.
Good. Appreciate the initiative and drive you take and appreciate we can see, see those signs.
I'm working at it.
Perfect.
So we're getting there.
Thanks Josh.
Nate?
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
All right. Well, start with, uh, updates on bridge two and two oh three, those are community crossings projects. Judy, uh, excavating actually has copies of the base contract, so they're hopefully getting some of the paperwork filled out to me. E-verify and documents like that they're putting together. Not really scheduled for start at this point. Um, NIPSCO though, I'm coordinating with them on gas relocation for bridge number two. Uh, so their work is hopefully starting the week of April. If something changes due to weather, I'll let you know certainly, but during that, that road will actually be closed for that construction. Uh, we need to stake out the right of way in advance of that, so that'll be going on. So there'll be some, some work starting out there, but that's not the bridge work yet. So when people see that, don't be concerned that the road's gonna be closed indefinitely. That should be a day or two hopefully. Um, uh, bridge seventy-nine, that road is still closed at this time. We're waiting to finally do the asphalt wedge and level at the approaches. Um, in fact, we might even consider doing asphalt further west from three hundred west all the way to the bridge. Josh, myself, and the representative from Primm Co. are actually gonna meet and talk about that here this week and see what the price of that would be and present that. That was something that Ed had actually put into his budget for this year in advance, knowing that this project could be done. So it's not something unforeseen, it was something that was kinda planned for, but we need to get with Primm Co. before they do the asphalt to make sure that that happens.
Is there any other drainage issues we need to correct or fix?
Actually, because the bridge sits so high and that area to the west sits significantly above the fields, really no. We're not anticipating anything else. I've been out there a number of times since that, the work that's been done has been done, everything's looking really good. I really just wanna get the barricades out, we keep throwing more sandbags on it. The public have been watching those, they, they put them out and the windstorms come through and blow them out in the fields and so we'd set them up again, wind, throw them and tear them up and we put them up again. So there's about eighteen inches of sandbags stacked on top of it now after the, I think the fourth time they set it up, so. Um, third item, who's, uh, for those of you, I've attached a, another document. Um, as some of you have been aware, there's a number of record drawings and documents there in my office that really there is no backup of. There's no duplicates unless they're just extra paper copies, but everything's really housed there in the office at the highway garage. Um, some of those records are essentially original construction drawings or reconstruction drawings of some of the old state roads that are now county roads or of state bridges and state projects that we have or just internal documents of bridges and small structures. These date back into the nineteen twenties, earlier, all the way through the fifties. And multiple records with really no backup or duplicates. Uh, to try to keep our records straight and prevent catastrophic loss. I mean, we dodged a bullet in some ways when the roof over the highway garage was blown off. The number of records weren't destroyed due to mold and water damage. Um, to prevent that, I'd like to move towards getting digital copies made so that we could keep these in offsite storage. And then a number of these records even are bridges that may not even be in service, but are records of the county for historical purposes. You know, it's a little, it's a piece of Wells County history that I'd like to try to retain. Um, to do that though, though we have some scanners within the county, that's not really a good use of county employee time. That's certainly gonna put a significant amount of wear and tear on our equipment. And also a number of the records that we have are in bad enough shape, they're going to need some extensive TLC to make sure that the records are in good shape, the digital copies that we get. As well as archiving and documenting what they are, because when you start scanning these, just putting them in one big scan makes it impossible to try to restore, retrieve the files and how you note that.
You said something, this scanner is a flatbed scanner?
They're, they have access to a flatbed scanner, so if they needed to do that, that's something that we don't have certainly. That's a very expensive piece of equipment. What this firm may also do is they may end up taking some of the more rolled and damaged documents and then putting them on backer sheets with clear sheets on them and then run them through scanners. So that's just a process they've done. They've done this sort of record and documentation, essentially digitizing of these sort of records for other communities as well. Um, the problem is, is it's not a flat fee, uh, because I don't have a good estimate. I mean, I could guess maybe five to six thousand documents that we have, but until we get through it and their time and the condition of the records as they go through it, they're not gonna give me a final cost. Um, they did give me a proposal estimating roughly a cost per sheet or cost per project. Um, and so that we don't open ourselves up to a high expense with something that's unforeseen or unknown. I'd like to just say, you know, let's put a certain dollar now per year until we get all these records covered. It's essentially an insurance policy for the county. Um, I'd like to try to spend three thousand dollars a year until we've covered all these documents. Now, I talked to Josh a little bit about this, but it's not really something, I don't think I can cover this under ceded bridges unless that's something that, that, that we can be done under ceded, uh, budget item. Otherwise, it's something we'd have to absorb under the highways budget. So I wanna bring it up if, I mean, you wanna discuss that more or look at options as where that can come from. Certainly, it's something that we could.
Do you have, do you have like an idea, the big ones first, the small ones first, or just?
Well, there are a number of records, there are a couple of records that are in my office that don't really need to be there. Like the, the historic documents, there are probably, I'd say probably a, say maybe five hundred to a thousand drawings of bridges that are no longer in service in Wells County. They've been removed, but they're a piece of history. Um, there are documents of drawings, projects that were built by highway employ, county employees. There are reference churches that no longer exist, schoolhouses that no longer exist. Ditch names actually have been renamed since they were reference points for locations.
Do we really wanna put money into scanning those? Or would Historical Society have interest in such things?
That's kinda what I'm thinking. How about a donation? Well, that's, um, something to consider, I.
We've, we've got representatives in the audience and we don't wanna put you on the spot.
Churches and schools, we have to know about those things. Ditches, I don't care about the names of those too much, but, um.
About bridges?
Chuck, bridges.
I, I think it's something we'll, we'll bring in front of the board, uh, in the next couple of weeks and get back with you.
Because rather than pay money to scan them in, if that's something that would be acceptable as a donation, we could donate the ones that aren't useful to the Historical Society.
Is it, I mean, are you talking about a file cabinet full or is it?
It would essentially be documents about twenty-four inches deep by thirty-six inches wide, some of them smaller. Like those documents actually are a little shorter, maybe eighteen by twenty-four.
And how thick is that?
But they are probably about three to four inches thick as far as the stack. And that's just those bridges, there are other ones that are similar sheets to that, but also could be grouped into it. And as we scan them, there's gonna be other documents or search through these individually, sheet by sheet, we're gonna find other documents that I can't correlate to what's actually in the field. Um, much of what I'm trying to target my office at is at the projects are actually under development. You know, keep the records of what's current and as those are, um, retired and, and new, new projects go in, we archive those and essentially creating an archive. Um, Historical Society, they've got a great partner in, in doing that, because it is, it's Wells County history.
I feel pretty comfortable with some kind of agreement, so we'll, we'll bring it in front of our board and get back with you.
That'd be awesome.
Did the, the county have a document committee that met in the last thirty days?
To decide what to destroy?
Oh, yeah, yeah, they did, they did need, first of the month.
Does it have to go through, is it something that should go through them?
Uh-huh, it should go through them if they're going to transport the records out. You have to do a request for destruction of records form.
If you destroy.
What if we're not destroying them?
Either or.
Movement.
Moving them, not the request.
Moving them would also fall into that. Okay.
I'm not trying to hold one right.
Can we table this until next meeting and get their reply and then go through that?
Yeah, we can do that process and then in light of this, I would certainly prioritize some of the other projects as far as scanning. Um, that would allow us some time to.
Right.
To see what our expenses are in service or not.
Okay. Do any of, do any of the documents pertain to the former state highway right of way now, county right of way?
Yes.
We talked about that.
Yeah, so some of those are, that would probably be a good priority for me to search because.
We're talking about is the, the state obtained rights of way and those roads reverted to the county and it might be nice to know what we already have before we have to.
Well, and I've, I've actually referenced the, their documents on multiple occasions already. Um, in fact, uh, um, one of the school districts is asking questions about right of way information, so, um, hold some records up for them as well, so.
Speaking of school districts, when you close a road or when this gas company's closing the road, are, are they in charge of notifying the school superintendent for bus routes or do we do that as a highway department?
Typically, I try to, courtesy, I mean, part of the purpose of bringing those up in these meetings is so it gets out in the media so they're aware of it, but when it's like a one or two day, you know, but we have not particularly made a point on bridge seventy-nine. That was an issue, I think they notified them with some incorrect information, so there was some confusion from Norwell's.
Probably good if that came directly from.
From us, yeah, so certainly, we can do that.
Thank you.
Okay. We do have five rights of way.
Woo-hoo. Motion to approve and sign rights of way.
All right.
No, that was definitely, that's a lot of credit for, for reaching out to some of the residents. Um, it's always kinda difficult to, when you're in a government position to be cold calling people about right of way, but.
Always good to have a big guy.
And, yeah, so it's like, you know, if you go to school with some of them, yeah, it's like, yeah, that doesn't hurt either, so. No, we'll, we'll, we'll keep at this and, um, that's the first step in, in spending money on these projects, so, well, thank you.
Thanks, Meg.
Oh, to sign the right of, right of way documents?
Yes.
You did it telepathically.
I did.
All right, they proved easier.
Thank you.
It's like, yes.
Okay, is Jared here? Yes, floods. Awareness week. First day, rainy day. Yeah.
Starts out with a rainy day.
Oh, I'm sorry, there you go.
No, that's ours. Oh, that's ours, I don't know, there's extras.
There's extras. The week of, uh, March nineteenth and the twenty-fifth is flood safety awareness week. Um, have a brochure over there, if you wanna look through it. Um, have two copies of the proclamation, one copy is for Beth's records and the other copy is for our records. Just ask that you sign and support that.
Okay, motion to name this week, the nineteenth and twenty-fifth of March in Wells County as flood safety awareness week. Sign the documents proclaiming such.
Second.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Right.
Kinda fitting, the first day of spring, we had heavy rain.
Yeah.
Voice slays me. Turn around, don't run. Yeah, listen to that.
Nope, I can make it.
We can make it, yeah. It's where a lot of the fatalities come from with our flooding. Thanks Jared. Thanks Jared. Less on the list than extra items from Beth.
Okay. First thing I had was, um, I'm in a random of agreement that Roy Ray sent out to you to review for the veteran service officer to do a, um, to hire a contractor to do driving for veterans to hospitals.
Yes.
Yes, if, um, we had, so I know this is all kinda still just draft, but, you know, I just wanna bring that up. If you guys had any, I didn't, um, know if you had any preferences or if Roy had anything more to add on that, because we have two different ways.
No, I haven't, I, I had not heard back from the veteran service officer. Uh, I suggested that maybe the individual, I, what, what it had to do with is, uh, they had a volunteer that was gonna drive veterans to medical appointments and, uh, uh, they were talking about compensation, whether to pay him for, him or her for a trip or for mileage. And, and he called with respect to, uh, drafting an independent contractor agreement. So I worked on that, but I suggested that the individual may wanna check with his insurance carrier, make sure he didn't have any liability insurance problems if you start receiving compensation. And he thought, oh, that might be a deal breaker. And, and so, well, I'd, I'd rather throw water on it than try to deal with it after the event. I did call Dick Randall and, and, uh, I read to him what I was trying to put in the agreement and also with respect to, uh, suggestions of coverage. And he's the one who gave me the suggestion for coverage and confirmed that, that, that may well be a, a problem for an individual driving and take it out of your personal into some kind of a commercial venture. So I've not heard back from, well, but anyways, the, the, you have two inconsistent provisions, whether you're gonna compensate for trip or mileage, wasn't intending to use both.
I wonder if they could somehow connect with WOW and use one of their drivers that's already being paid and just pay a contract fee. Maybe that would clean it up.
I just don't know whether WOW's driving to Fort Wayne or Indianapolis.
They go to Fort Wayne, but Indianapolis they don't. Do they have any, any other counties?
They could talk to them.
Place Marion too, didn't still have the hospital there, so I'm sure they'd probably make those three trips. Yeah, and I don't know, you know, as far as WOW, if they do go that far or not, I don't know, but.
But if they were compensated.
They may, I don't know, that's why I said, I don't know.
It might be a direction they could look into.
I mean, the risk is reduced.
But we need to, what happened is an individual gave us a claim to pay him and he's not an employee or a contract, so we have to either put him on as an employee or do a service contract for anybody that would want to do that.
But he's already made a trip. And to be known to him, so.
Yeah, and that's why I said, that's why this comes about, because we've got a claim to pay him.
Pay him how much though?
Mileage.
Which is how much?
At the rate is point five three seven five.
Which comes up to a total of?
Well, I don't, he had several trips.
Oh, geez.
Yeah, so I said, well, we can't, he's not an employee, so we can't reimburse him unless we have a contract, so we gotta do something.
What's the employee for us taking trips? What's that standard?
It's the federal, whatever the federal rate, we go by the federal rate, which is five.
Point five three.
Five three, right now, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, and I will get with Claude, I just wanted to bring it up to make sure you guys read that and if you had any suggestions or anything else, you know.
You could have their cart in front of their horse. Do they have, they don't have any funds in their department?
They have.
They have a budget for their department and I think Claude makes trips too, you know, and then he gets reimbursed, but if he's unavailable, then he uses, obviously, this guy, a volunteer, to, to do that, but, um.
Yeah, I think they just didn't realize that they couldn't compensate it because we don't cover the, as an, they're not an employee.
Right.
Claude is.
Right.
And so they were just trying to help the, the individuals out and it's not in our cards right now.
But if Claude's compensation is the same as reg- regularly, correct?
Right.
Right.
Yeah, but this is just normal insurance coverage type of thing.
Exactly, right, yeah.
Well, yeah, because he's driving for the county and he's not either under contract or he's not a county employee, either or.
Or have some liability that's there.
And so.
I don't know, I think Claude should probably maybe just find a little money in his budget if he can pay them, that would probably be the cleanest thing, don't you think?
Yeah, but I think that's not the money issue, it's more the liability issue.
Right, yeah.
Right.
That's what I'm thinking too.
Right, well, then there's not anything we can do about it. Unless Roy has another suggestion, but what's done.
No, it just didn't make any, any doubts. I'm sorry to be the bad guy on the liability insurance, but that's welcome in my world, you know.
Right, yeah, safe and sorry.
Now, it, it, we've had that before.
So we wanna make, make it, uh, pay the mileage, we gotta pay them that. Right, and then we just have to have something going forward or we just wanna?
Well, I think, I think what it is for you is, is, uh, I was asked to draft an independent contractor agreement. Trent had done several, never on this subject, but sometimes you just have a commissioner, sometimes county council. I think I used both and then copied you so you'd know what it is and also for input as to what your preference might be, whether it's mileage or per trip.
But it still begs the question if the individual wants to do that because of their insurance liability. So do you know for sure that they even want it at this point?
I, I think it's important that a person be a licensed driver and, and carry insurance. That's the recommendation from our insurance advisor, is the limits that I put in there. Cause you know how that works, so many times if you're gonna do something like that's almost like for hire, so then you have to have a separate type of insurance, which kinda becomes cost prohibitive sometimes.
And, and it could be even if he would put the guy on as a part, an additional part-time employee, you know, and then he would be an employee of the county and then he would get paid his, um, mileage reimbursement. But right now, he's not an employee or he's not a contract, you know, so we need to do something, either or, you know.
The council would have to approve having even an additional part-time employee, correct?
Absolutely.
And also just.
And it's not their budget plan yet.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, we, we gotta wait till July and August.
Yeah, but, you know, as a part-time employee, he's also, he already has a line item for a part-time employee that this person wouldn't be, you know, working every day.
Right.
That, you know, he probably can hire him on an on-call. I'm just thinking that this might be something that we could do as an on-call, part-time person too. But he still needs to come in and get signed up for payroll, if that's what they would elect to do, but we'll follow up with, with Claude on it, you know, to see what the best way is going. But one way or the other, we, we gotta have him either as an employee signed up or we have to have him as an independent contractor to be able to pay him.
So if we do it as an independent contractor.
Does that still not have to go through the budget process if the council?
He's probably got money in his.
Claude's already got that money.
Yeah, he's probably got money in his line item now to, to pay the person. And it's not all the time, I mean, you know, it's not like a weekly basis or anything like that, you know. So occasionally.
And if we do a contract, can we limit it to a certain amount or is it something?
That's what I was gonna say, we gotta, we need to know what each destination is, I guess.
Well, and that's where we.
It's Fort Wayne, if it's Marion, if it's Indy.
If we could do it, you know, so much for each of them.
It's a while, no.
That's what we looked at, fifty dollars a trip, you know, which if you go to Fort Wayne's, you know, it's not as much, but if you went to Indianapolis, it would be more than. So if he's making trips to either, that kinda just put it right in the middle. If we went by so much per trip, if we get a contract.
I would think Fort Wayne and Marion should be a. I would think Fort Wayne and Marion should be a rate and Indy should be just a little bit more, so maybe forty and sixty or something, I don't know. I'm just, now to do the calculation before you talk, but I'm just thinking that now, so.
Yeah, we can make, you know, we're just, this is all just kind of in draft, but we just need to.
So, move forward with making it a contract, making it a set amount rather than mileage and we can sign it at the next meeting?
Yeah, we, that given kind of topic, Claude more.
Okay.
Thank you.
He can give us feedback too.
That's my motion.
Perfect, that's what we're running for.
Right, now, just go, discussion.
Okay. Anything else, Beth?
I sent you an, um, email from, what do they call this, the Mental Health Association, America, and where they was asking if they could meet and use the mental health office that we have at the annex. And then Roy sent out an email right after that, that, um, the first United Methodist Church has also discussed office space for this committee. So, did you talk to?
No, I, I, I didn't, they hadn't talked with respect to this particular organization, but I know that the church has had, um, a Fort Wayne counseling agency contact them with respect to, uh, space and, and at least the administrative council meeting, they've, they've got the space and even talked about advertising for it, so when I got that email, I thought, well, this sounded like a good fit, if.
And the issue that mental health is not a government agency, it's a private entity.
Right.
Right.
We should suggest they seek space elsewhere.
I'm sure they're all good agencies, it's just worried they're all lying and.
I'd probably not be in favor of that.
I agree.
At this, at this point.
Okay, that they should maybe check with the church?
Right.
Sorry, I have all kinds of things, okay, we had the closing on the county farm last Friday and, um.
Nobody attended.
Well, they called, I was going to be there, but they said they didn't need to be there.
We had all the signatures in place.
When I got to the office, I had an email from the buyer saying he wasn't going to be there either, he was just jumping inside everything, so.
So, anyhow, the, um, I've got all the paperwork and everything has been done as far as that and I do have to check, you know, for the, um, sale of that. And I know you had mentioned about earmarking that, um, so I'm just bringing that up again before I, um, quite as this check into a circular fund, if there's anything particular that you're wanting to do with that.
Big pizza party. No, I, I, I'd requested that it be set aside at some future time for a facility for the highway department, but, um, I would let that probably, that's my thought, but I would entertain your thoughts too and then, um, let council determine what they want to do with it, if that's what you guys choose. Uh, I don't know when that could even happen, I mean, we're talking probably.
Well, can we put it?
Two to five years in the future at least.
Can we put it someplace where it's going to get a little interest in a CD or something until then?
I think the, the banking policy has to stay in a Wells County bank and, um.
Yeah, we, we invest, yeah, the, the total money on deposits, we do that, um, annually and then we could also, um, if it was in its own fund, then yes, we could put it in a CD and it would draw interest, it would just go right direct right to that fund.
Can we make a fund or does it have to go through council?
Would we have to?
We would have to adopt a home rule fund to put it in.
Okay. I would encourage that, but that's just me.
Can we do that with a motion?
Can we do that with a motion here?
I think we can.
Motion to make a fund separate, a new fund for that money to be set aside for use towards the highway facility.
I'm second to that.
All favor?
Uh.
Hi.
Let's do that.
Okay, Roy will work on that before that church meeting for a home rule final, that then. Okay, sorry, yes.
That was good.
Yeah, um, I sent out, I've been doing all kinds of things here lately, um, it was brought up to, um, at our last council meeting actually, about our policy for county-owned vehicles because of some questions that they had, had to them. So, as we looked, we really didn't have a policy for take-home vehicles, so I worked on the policy, um, kind of used, um, some things that other counties have been using and I forwarded that out to you and I'm just getting your feedback on that, if there's anything you'd like to add, change, review.
I'd like to revisit that on the April second meeting.
Okay.
I have a couple of grammatical corrections.
Yeah, I know of one, yeah, yeah, I know of one, but, um, yeah.
Those are both there as far as that's concerned, but as far as content, I'm definitely, I have an opinion at this point.
Yeah, let's, let's bring that up.
Okay, absolutely.
Were there particular concerns, Chuck, that you're aware of?
I mean, no.
That we need a policy or what was the discussion?
Beth, Beth knows more about it than I do.
Yeah, he wasn't one of the council members, that was, there were three other council members that, um, asked me about it.
During the council meeting, it was afterwards?
Yeah, no, they asked afterwards if we had a policy, yes.
I, I did review what you wrote up and I have no objection to that.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, we will just review for next meeting. Also, the last thing I have, I believe, is the, uh, policy for the rescue units and I know that, I think I got back from one that you wanted to do something.
Six things I have written down and thought about it on Saturday, but it's still sitting there.
So, we just need feedback on that also, that's a very rough draft also, you know, so, just.
I should have my stuff to you this week so we can have it for the next meeting.
And that's all I have.
Uh, I would just like to, to share that last week, uh, our longtime county attorney, Trent Patterson, passed away and, uh, I was fortunate enough to serve with Trent for probably twenty-plus years and, uh, he's, he's greatly missed. He's an individual that had a lot of interaction with over the years, both personally and, uh, business within the county and I just, uh, I think I speak for everybody in, in the county that, uh, our prayers are with his wife, Mary Beth, and his sons.
Yeah, a shock, I'll put it that way for me.
Thank you.
Beth, anything else left?
Yep, that's all I have.
Audience?
Yes?
Has the commissioners been approached by Apex leaving the county or staying in the county?
No, sir.
I have not, John, no interaction whatsoever.
Some of the landowners now are getting letters that, uh, their lease, they're letting their leases go. And also, there's some landowners that are getting, uh, approached by solar in Wells County. So, the commissioners know nothing about this?
They have not approached us whatsoever, I assume they're trying to keep it on the hush since that's how they approached the wind turbine issue when they started.
Well, I, I do know some landowners have contacted me, want to know what's going on, so that's why I'm here asking the commissioners.
I've had one real estate person ask me if I know anything about it and I said, no.
Wind turbines or?
Apex, Apex leaving.
Apex in general.
Apex leaving.
Yeah, that's the only.
Well, I just wanted to relate that to you that some landowners are getting their leases terminated and some landowners are being approached for solar in the county.
Thank you.
Good to know.
Yeah, thanks.
Why aren't they talking to you?
Maybe it was like the last time, I bet it doesn't happen again.
County doesn't, county doesn't have a lease limit.
I think they did it, it's fine, right?
Yeah, we got to check and we'll send it back.
Being approached by some landowners, our group of people have been involved with the turbines and now we're seeing other things happening. They, they have committed themselves to one landowner, they still owe him money for the wind turbines and now they're approaching him for the solar. He's not interested.
I'm not sure they're the most reputable company.
Thank you, partner.
I'm not sure that Apex is probably the most reputable company when it comes to communications with the government agencies.
Well, the commissioners should know what's going on and I'm just relating that to you guys, that it is out there.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yeah, you, you can send them a message back from me that I'm not really interested in any energy type of savings.
Okay.
Within the county, cause obviously I've seen what happened before and I witnessed what's going on around the, the state individuals I've approached over time, so I'm not really in favor of what they have to offer.
Okay.
Anything else? Being said.
Motion adjourned.
You're done.
Thank you.
Thank you.